I'd like to call tonight's public hearing for Access Nashua, Channel 96, to order. It's 7:07. Just a little brief history for those people that don't know the history of Access Nashua. We were established July 1st, 2011 by the mayor adding it to the city's budget in order to fund it for one year as a trial. The contract was renewed the following year, and we now have a contract that is ongoing unless either the funding stops, or basically if we mess up bad. So otherwise than that, Access Nashua will continue. The budget for this coming year will be out in another month or two, but things look very well because Access Nashua has been doing very well this past year. I'm just going to give you briefly some statistics from the past year. From March 1st of 2012 till the end of February 2013, we had a total hearings of 856 shows. Those are individually different shows. The average length of a show was 38 minutes and 58 seconds. The total runs was 4,772 hours and 57 minutes. That works out to be 199 days, 24 hours a day. However, we broadcast usually from 9:00 a.m. till about 11:00 p.m. We do play some reruns, we'll call them, in the early morning hours. The number of totally locally-produced shows was 410, so that's 48 percent of the shows that we aired were locally-produced. Locally-sponsored. Now, the difference between locally-produced and locally-sponsored is that a Nashua resident can sponsor a show that's produced outside of Nashua. So it does take someone to actually sponsor it and be responsible for that show. So we had 193 of the shows last year were locally-sponsored, which was 22.5 percent of the shows we aired. The remaining shows were shows that we took it upon ourselves to use as filler, and they were 253 shows for 29.5 percent. Presently at this time, we have 15 different shows that are being produced, mostly all regularly. Some are sporadic now and then, once a month, and so forth. We have at least four or five that are close to being -- they're in production and they're close to being finished and start airing. So I'll give you some specific show statistics. One of the shows is The Art of Politics. They have done 38 total episodes. Can Do All Things in Christ, 16 episodes. Cristo Salva, 35 episodes. Fairy Tale Access, 26 episodes. Gate City Chronicles, 61 episodes. Gidz World, 21 episodes. Nashua Geographic, six episodes. Nashua Nonprofits, four. New Beginning Fellowship, seven. The Democrats, 24. People's View, 67. Republican City Committee had five shows. The Silver Skillet was 10 shows. Speak Up, 43 shows. Special Talk, five shows. Vibrant Living with Dr. Lisa, seven shows. Now, before I go on, if I had really followed my notes well, the beginning would have had the introduction of staff, which is what's written there. So...
Can't we just edit that?
Yeah, we'll edit it in.
Okay.
So what we're saying now will be put at the beginning of the show. Anyways, my name is Dick Gagnon. I'm owner and operator of CMSG, which is Community Media Services Group, LLC. We have the contract to operate and manage Channel 96, Access Nashua. And in my team, we have Dan Young, who is our creative director. He started out as our trainer. As we got to know Dan more and see more of his work, I've changed his title to Creative Director because that's exactly where he fits in well. And Dan will talk -- and you're not getting a raise for that different title before you ask. And Dan will talk more about what he does. Over here on my left is Steve Candelaro, and he's our new administrative assistant. He replaced Melinda Tajem, who was our very good administrative assistant volunteer. And when she left, we actually found out that there was a big void. And Steve came along, and we've added Steve to our team. And Steve will talk also about what he does. One of the other things about Access Nashua is that we're a member of the NHCCM, which stands for the New Hampshire Coalition for Community Media. It's the organization that has the membership entails peg stations in New Hampshire. We have anywhere from 35 to 38 peg stations that are members. We have independent producers who are individual members. And it's a good way to learn a lot of techniques, as well as new ideas are shared whenever we have our membership meetings and our workshops. One of the big advantages also is that the NHCCM has a file-sharing server. And Access Nashua is taking a lot more interest in working with our producers to get their shows up on the file-sharing server so that other stations can download them and air them in their town. So this is an advantage that we have in giving our producers a wider area of viewership. We have a YouTube site that we're working on now as well that will contain different playlists for each show. And this, again, is something that we're doing to help encourage our producers to get more recognition for the work they do. Because even though we do our best and we make it as easy as possible for someone to come in and produce a show, it still takes time and some effort for producers to come in and to get their guests and to interview them. So we really appreciate their efforts, and in turn, we want to help them spread their word around. Our website, accessnashua.org, is a good source for information, as well as for the video-on-demand of all our locally-produced shows. We don't put up any of the locally-sponsored or outside shows on our video-on-demand page, but if you were to go to that, you would see all the shows that are produced locally, you know, the 16 of them that I spoke about. And you'd see past episodes that you can watch on demand on the Internet. So that, again, is another way for producers to spread the word around. We have a newsletter that goes out periodically that Steve has learned to maintain and will be actively starting to send out information more frequently about things that are going on, as well as updating our Facebook page. Now, I'm going to leave the rest of the items for Dan and Steve to talk about because those are the things they deal with. So now, Dan.
All right. So we're just going to look at the list here and see what the rest of the things are. Excellent. So, again, my name is Dan Young. Most of you in this room know me, but if you don't, I encourage you to come in and see what the station's all about. We -- as Dick had mentioned, I started out as the trainer, and I still do an awful lot of training, mostly on a one-on-one basis because I find that working with the -- with video and editing especially, it's just much easier to work in a one-on-one environment than in a group environment, especially with the video editing. That way, we can tailor exactly what it is that you'd like to learn to your show, to your project, and you don't necessarily need to learn the extra stuff that wouldn't necessarily come to your project. As creative director, I'm helping individuals and groups develop shows, develop their programs, be it their openings, their style, their whatever. We have several new shows just right there on the horizon that are about to air any moment now. And a lot of these shows, we've taken them out of the studio, and we brought them out onto the streets. We have one show coming out tentatively called Friends for Life, and it's going to star a 10-year-old girl, Kylie, who will be interviewing all sorts of people all around town. It's going to be a great show. Her brother is going to -- I'm teaching him how to edit, and I'm teaching her father how to shoot it. So it becomes a true family affair, and it's going to be absolutely fantastic, and I'm looking forward to it. And what else here?
Yeah, we encourage the video.
And what I'd like to encourage each and every one of you to do is to come on down, like I said, and volunteer, volunteer on a show. And we're always looking for help. We have, again, we have all these location shows that we need people to help shoot these things. We need people to help edit these shows. And in turn, if we develop this big bank of volunteers, we can all volunteer and work on each other's shows. One day you might be shooting, the next day you might be hosting, you know? So that's all I got.
All righty. Thanks, Dan. Steve?
Thank you. Anything on that list? I should be a...
No. Nope. You just talk about what you do.
Excellent, excellent. Thanks to everybody for turning out this evening. I hope everybody was able to find a seat. I just want to bring two points, mostly for what I do here. I have a television production management background, and when Dick and I met the first time, I was a volunteer, and I quickly explained what I had done in previous jobs, and I think I got -- he piqued his interest. And I used to work in daytime television back in New York. I can tell you stories about Regis and Kathy Lee if you want. I worked with...
Off-camera.
Off-camera, that's fine. She still owes me $5 anyway. I also worked in daytime drama for what's called soap operas, which is not the correct phrase, but I understand what is involved in producing television. And I think Dick and I, right away, understood that there's a specific language, that we can help people who want to produce television here in the community. We can help them get there. I know I can definitely help producers. I understand the passion and the time it takes for someone to get in front of a camera. It's now the 21st century. I know people can go take a cellphone camera and produce a 10-minute show, but some of the content and the lighting and the audio are not what -- if you have a message, that's not the avenue. Public access in the community is still a great example. This is not your parents' public access. State-of-the-art equipment, it's digital. We're here to help. Dick is here to help. Dan, there are volunteers who are all the time asking questions. We're happy to help you. And if you go to accessnashua.org, you go to video-on-demand, you can see what people have done. I'm happy to help anybody with any questions. I want the community to come on down and use the equipment. It's free. Is there anything else that I can implore people? Come on down. Happy to help you. Okay? And Regis, if you're out there, you owe me $10, okay?
We'll send this video to him. Good luck collecting them. Okay. Another aspect of Access Nashua is the fact that we've helped organize a new association called the Friends of Access Nashua. So David, if I could have you come up and talk about it. David is the president of the Friends of Access Nashua, which has been newly formed. David?
Richard, thank you. Gentlemen, and if I -- before I begin, could I just give you a plug? From a community producer's point of view, the level of equipment and expertise and interest and support that comes from the professional members of the station is tremendous. We are very, very fortunate to have you and to have the folks who've gone through before you at the station, and there is so much that we can learn from you and really appreciate the fact that you're here. Because what you are offering to us and what the city is offering to us, and what the mayor and the Board of Aldermen are offering to us through sponsorship and through funding this, is a tremendous opportunity to tell the story of Nashua. Tell the story of the people of Nashua, educate, provide entertainment, and it's a wonderful community opportunity. That said, my name is Dave Robbins, and I started out almost a year back as a community producer and co-host of a television show. The last couple of months, we've gotten together and formed something called Friends of Access Nashua. And what that is, is a not-for-profit organization. We are in the process of filing with the IRS for a 501(c)(3) certification so that we will be a tax-exempt organization, and contributions will be tax-deductible. The intent of this organization is to provide an independent source to support the Access Nashua Channel 96 television station and public access television throughout New Hampshire by extension. I stress "independent" because the -- we work with the station and with the folks who run the station, but we are not in any way subservient to them. We are an independent organization. Our intent is to raise funds, to provide supplemental equipment, supplemental programming, supplements that will make what is produced better, to make the offerings better for the citizens of Nashua. And we are -- our board members, if I could just list their names here, because I think many people will know some of them, Derek Pullet, Barry Rio, Kevin Potter, Scott Silva, and myself, Dave Robbins. We are going to be soliciting membership. We want to get as many people as possible. It does not cost anything to join. It is a way for those who support public access television to come together. We are looking for people to fundraise. We're looking for people to reach out for grant money. We hope to get some grant money. We hope to request and apply for grant money to do specific projects. We're going to be working with station management to find out what their needs are and what we can provide, and look for innovative ways to assist the station, as I said, through equipment or through different kinds of programming that require funds. I would ask anybody who would like to join, to come together, to contact anybody at the station, or you can contact me directly, Dave Robbins, and my email is displayed below.
Well, adding pressure to us.
I am adding pressure, yes. And I'll be handing out applications for membership here. I've only got about 30 of them, so first come, first served. And look forward to talking with anybody who's interested, anybody who wants to get involved with a different dimension to support public access television in Nashua. And I thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it, David. Let me mention that for a year, for the first year and a half that I've been managing Access Nashua, one of my goals right away was to try and find someone who would take on leadership to get the Friends of Access Nashua going. As everyone knows, there's a lot of Indians, but sometimes there's very few chiefs. And finally, in talking with David, he said he'd be interested in helping get it started and everything. So I grabbed onto him, and we went from there, and we want to thank you, David, for taking up this great cause. Sure, next.
Hi, my name is Scott McCullough, and I'm -- my name is Scott McCullough. I live at 38 Greenwood Drive. I'm a producer of Special Talk, and I greatly appreciate if anybody can come on my show because I need more -- I need more guests, need more sponsor. And I'd like to do a shout-out to Chris Bondalippi, especially our camera crew, who has done many things for Special Talk, has come out to the Special Olympics Penguin Plunge, the Winter Games, the basketball tournament recently, 2012.
The softball tournament.
And he's -- softball tournament. And come on down, like Dan and Steve say, come on down, check it out. If you want to volunteer on my show, I don't mind. If you want to come down on our show, Special Talk, and help out? What the heck? I could use volunteers to come edit more programs because I can't always depend -- I can't -- Chris Bondalippi is a busy man, and I'd like to see if anybody wants to maybe come down and help out, edit our shows, and get them on faster, and maybe get some sponsorship and all that. Thank you.
And Scott, can I ask you, what's your focus? Tell the people your focus of your show, your interview show.
Pretty much talking about Special Olympics and trying to get the message out.
Yep. And Scott's shows that we've aired are on the video-on-demand page. It's called Special Talk with Scott McCullough. Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Kyle, I believe you wanted to say a few words?
Well, thank you for having me up here. I do want to have -- tell everybody present, and maybe they already know that the people -- I'm one of the hosts on People's View, and it's a wonderful opportunity, I think, to talk to our citizens here and let them know what's happening with people, with the things in Concord, with the things in the federal level, the county level. We've been interviewing the officials. We had today, we did an interview with the US Senator Kelly Ayotte and the GOP Chair of Jennifer Horn. This is something that I think is springing up across the state, and I think this is going to be one of the seats of getting a lot of this public information out and a way of sharing some of these programs, not only for Nashua, but for the rest of the state. So I just applaud your work, and if anybody wants to help do something on our show, we'll welcome them. Or let us know if you can recommend any kind of guests. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Now, I know you came in just a few minutes late, Kyle. I had read off the list of shows that we have, like 16 of them, different shows, and how many episodes they've done since their inception. And you're at the top of the list with 67 shows that the People's View have done. So we also want to thank you for the continued effort that you put into them, and it shows in your show as well.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kyle. Okay. No one else is interested? Okay. Now, one of the things about a public hearing is that it's good to hear the good things and everything, and if there are any problems, our, you know, accessnashua.org is our website, our phone number, which is below here. We'll put that down in editing. Feel free, email us at accessnashua@gmail.com. Any comments. But the biggest thing that I'll reiterate that Dan said and Steve has said and Scott has said and Kyle has said and David, come on down, come check us out. You know, give us a call, set up a time. I can tell you the crazy, busy nights are Tuesday evening and Thursday evening. We produce some -- sometimes we produce four or five shows that evening. We also are open on Saturdays. Most Saturdays, there'll be some that we're closed, but we also produce shows on Saturdays so that for those of you out there that are, you know, work eight to five and you find that once you're done working, you don't want to go and sit down and do a show, come in and talk with us. We're available on Saturdays. And like I said, there are some shows that come in one Saturday a month and do four shows from 10 to 2, and it is like a zoo.
It is the zoo.
But...
Especially when the cow comes in.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
They should tell their friends and neighbors about Channel 96, just to have everybody know.
Yes, good point, Kyle. Spread the word about Access Nashua, Channel 96, to all your friends and family and your coworkers. Just tell them, check out the channel. One thing that I'm proud of is that our channel is not like your common access, public access channel. There are still many channels in the state and in the country. Whenever I travel, I always go and check the access channel in that town or city. And you see many shows that are the blue curtain, the gray curtain, or a black curtain, and that's it. We're proud that with our green screen capabilities and our creative director who can go out and get the right photos to create backgrounds so that every show has their own image. And it's definitely something to be proud of, and Nashua definitely should be proud of it. So do you have anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay.
I think -- okay, I'll add one more thing. Going along with the whole volunteer, come on down and help out, I know that, you know, in this day and age, times are tough for a lot of people, and a lot of us might want to learn a new skill. And who knows where it can lead? You know, I've been a still photographer for many, many years. I wanted to make the leap into video and film and TV production, and here I am now. So, you know, maybe that's what you need, maybe, you know, come on down, learn a new skill, you know, and we'll help you out. We'll do what we can. And between Steve and I, we can answer just about any question, with the possible exception of why Regis owes him $10.
Right.
Yeah, so...
Steve, you want a closing thought?
Well, Regis knows what he did, so I won't address that. But Dan is right, if someone is between jobs and has time on their hands, because I know the job market is tight, and it can be very frustrating to be looking for a job eight, 10 hours a day. We are in the studio Tuesdays and Thursday nights late, and it's a welcome break to come and volunteer time and to get your mind elsewhere. And I think for anybody who's ever been there, it's good to have a place to go when you don't have a regular eight-to-five, nine-to-five, 10-to-six job. And this is one place where not only will we welcome you as a volunteer, I think time goes by so quickly that you're like, wow, it's 11 o'clock at night. Where did those four hours go? So I appeal to anybody out there who does have some time on their hands, please come and see us. It will be worth your time.
And we are open six days a week, except for an occasional Saturday, and our hours are posted on Access Nashua. And our hours are posted on accessnashua.org. So with that being said...
And below.
Yeah, that's right here below. Maybe we'll make it scroll, too. Ooh, I shouldn't have told you that.
Put a zipper.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing, and we want to thank everyone. Thank you.